Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 4, 2023 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Any of you will stand with us. Mike's going to lead us in a prayer and Amy on the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Father, Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to serve our town. Father God, I just pray that all our decisions will be the right ones for our town moving forward. Father God, just continue to be with our leaders here in the town, our firefighters, our police, our ambulance service. Father God, just watch over each and every one of them. Father, just continue to lead, guide, and direct us in all we do in our lives. Father, just thank you for all you do. In Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and Amy. Before we get started further, I want to welcome Charles Skerr here. Appreciate your joining us and looking forward to working with you over the next few years as we continue to plan and build our town.
Indeed, thank you.
Okay. Okay, citizens' comments. Okay, our next agenda item is election of officers. Jeff, I'd like to turn this over to you to take care of this.
All right, the first position that we will take nominations for it will be for chairman. Are there any nominations for chairman?
I'll nominate Tim Morell to continue to be our chairman.
All right, we have a nomination for Councilman Morell. Is there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, nominations will cease and we will vote by acclamation. All those in favor of Tim Morell as chairman, say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. The second position is for vice chairman, and I'll take nominations for vice chair.
I would like to nominate Mark Atkins for vice chair.
Nomination for Mark Atkins for vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, all those in favor of Vice Mayor Atkins as vice chair, say aye. Those opposed, so passes.
Okay. We will now move to approval of minutes of the April 6, 2023 meeting. Jeff, you're busy tonight. Are the meeting minutes in order?
They are in order.
Okay. Any comments or questions concerning the minutes from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from Mike. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Miranda. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed, the April 6 meeting minutes are approved. Our first under old business is an annexation and zoning and plan of service request. This comes from Joe Haddix, requested for two months. Bill France Road and Interstate 840, annexation I-2, C-2, and R-3 zoning request. It's my understanding this has been deferred, or they've asked for a deferral.
Requested for deferral, yes, sir.
Okay. So with that, if the commission is inclined to do so, I'll entertain a motion to defer.
It is a two-month deferral.
It is a two-month deferral.
I'll make a motion to defer for the next two months.
I have a motion for Mark for a two-month deferral. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. A motion and second for a two-month deferral. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the two-month deferral is approved. Next, under old business, the final plats, Woodmont Phase 8B Blue Diamond Drive, owner, developer, Meritage Homes of Tennessee, Inc.
Excuse me, trying to get right here.
Actually, I was like, did I say something wrong? There was a bit of a pause there.
Excuse me. This should be, this is a final plat. It's 24 lots in the Woodmont PRD. There were four comments left, and those would all still remain. This was deferred last month. We did have, excuse me, a request from the neighboring property owner, Mr. and Ms. Fisher. They, just yesterday, did hear from the engineer on the project, this project, that they are reaching out to Mr. Fisher's engineer, and they are working through that. They have not, there's not been a solution come to yet at this time, but they are, have begun that discussion. So again, this is something, it has been deferred one month already. The planning commission per state law does need to act on this tonight, one way or the other. They can't defer it again. So staff is okay with an approval of this. We would want to probably, excuse me, couch it with a condition perhaps of not recording the plat or anything until we get something finalized with that. The engineer is on the project, is here. I don't believe Mr. Fisher is here. Thank you.
Questions for Kevin on this? Kevin, if we approve this tonight, and the engineers can't come to an agreement on getting anything done with the water, the runoff, then it just goes ahead just like it is?
Well, you know, it becomes, it's a civil matter between the two property owners. We have reviewed it, our engineering department has reviewed this, and is completely, has approved the plan as presented by the developer. So I think we are, we're good with it from that standpoint. This is something that's really a dispute between two property owners, neighboring property owners. They have agreed to sit down and talk and work out. The two engineers kind of sit down and work through it, so.
But if they work through it, won't it change the way the parcel's laid out according to what?
Potentially. I mean, we don't really know for sure. If it would, yeah, certainly it could change, potentially could change the plat that would require, you know, a resubmit of the plat to you, certainly. That could happen.
Okay. So would it be easier for them to do that later on? Or if we don't pass this tonight, what would be the process there? Because I know we can't defer it again.
Yeah, if you all were to turn down the final plat approval tonight, they could resubmit at any time, certainly.
Okay.
Last month, Mr. and Ms. Fisher were both here and spoke, and the whole idea behind the deferment then was to give them time to discuss that. But in hindsight, staff was okay with it then, and they're okay with it now. So going back to what I think Kevin's issue, but not issue, statement is that it becomes a civil matter. As long as we're doing what TDEC requires of us, and they have, according to Kevin, I think we allowed them some time to work through that. It could take them a long time, to be quite honest.
It could. I mean, yeah. I mean, I know it's something that Mr. Fisher has been, we've met with him several months ago on this project. So it's something he's been looking at for a while, from his standpoint. This is, it was something that our, the preliminary plat was approved several months ago. This plat is consistent with that preliminary plat, is consistent with everything we've looked at on this project, on this phase. So again, from staff's standpoint, we're, we're okay if you all want to move forward with approving it tonight. Again, but potentially maybe if you want to add some sort of condition to hold up the recording of the plat till it gets settled or something like that, if you want to want to involve the city into that, we could.
But couldn't that drag out the whole thing for a year, or?
I mean, it could.
Or longer?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to make it a condition that it get worked out from the standpoint of the final plat approval, I guess. That's why I said maybe hold up the recording of the plat. Because if it don't get worked out, then they got to come back to get it reapproved by you at that point, but. Well. Well, I mean, I, if you put the condition on it that it has to be worked out before you're recorded, it would never be recorded. Actually, I don't, I don't want to make it a condition of the approval that everything has to be settled and everything is good. Because again, if for some reason that doesn't happen, a year from now, two years from now, they got to come back to you all and try to get a plat reapproved.
Which they could do, right?
Yeah.
So.
But again, from, from staff's standpoint, we're good with the design of the subdivision. And we're fine recommending approval to you of the plat as it's been presented to you. And again, it's a civil matter between two property owners from our standpoint.
I guess, you know, when considering this, you know, and hearing that staff's looked at it, and staff, it meets our requirements, and we're good as far as any potential issues there, I'm wondering if there were any type of conditioning that, I don't want to say it would delay the process, but I guess where I'm heading with it is, have we really achieved anything at this point? And if there is still a difference of opinion, that's a civil matter, would that not be settled somewhere along the line outside of the scope of the town?
Yeah, it would be. I mean, it would be something I'll defer to Mr. Peach.
Yeah, Jeff.
I appreciate what Kevin's trying to do, but I believe you either have to vote it up or vote it down. I don't know what the measuring stick would be for working it out or not.
Yeah, that's where I.
And, and so that would in effect be a denial if they did not work it out. And so it would not have been accomplished before 30 days. So I think you have to either vote it up or vote it down, and obviously consider if it was all the requirements that it met for the, for the sketch plat, and if it's still meeting those, I think the recommendation would be that it's approved.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mark. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Miranda. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. This motion is approved. We are now on to new business. First is annexation and zoning and plan of service request. Oliver Constable, southwest of intersection of Lee Road and Rocky Fork Road, annexation and PRD zoning request.
This is a request for annexation of basically one parcel, and one entire parcel of land and parts of two others that total about 47.83 acres. They are currently zoned RM in Rutherford County. The proposed zoning is for about 41.66 acres to be zoned to a PRD, and the remaining acreage of about 6.17 to have an R1 zone. Training zoning would be RM in Rutherford County. The land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Lee Road as a collector and Rocky Fork Road as a minor arterial. In addition, the proposed Rocky Fork Road/McEwen Drive corridor does cross this property, and it would be accommodated with this proposed plan. And development of these properties would require dedication of article right-of-way, whether that be Lee Road, the Rocky Fork/McEwen Drive connector, both of those. The request of PRD is for 88 single-family lots, again, with that remaining land to be zoned R1. There are two existing houses that would be annexed as a part of this request. Both would be removed as a part of the development. Staff would recommend the annexation of approximately 4,542 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Lee Road from the existing town limits at Hidden Creek to the easternmost boundary of this property to make it contiguous to the town limits. In addition, approximately 1,405 linear feet of the right-of-way of Jordan Lane would be annexed. This road runs from Lee Road to Rocky Fork Road, provides access to two houses, which would adjoining the requested tracks. It's a substandard road, it's only about 12 feet wide. The county highway superintendent, Greg Brooks, told me he has a 20-foot prescriptive right-of-way on this road. The developer has indicated that it would be abandoned and partially removed upon development of this property. The two existing driveways, which are basically on either end of it, would be provided an access easement on the portions of the existing road, which would not be removed. Essentially, this right-of-way is entirely encompassed in this, one of the requested tracks for annexation. So they would be proposing to basically essentially remove it except for either end of it where it does provide access to two adjoining houses. The required minimum fire flow is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. CUD has indicated that this fire flow cannot be met at this time. They have, just as of this afternoon, late this afternoon, we did receive a copy of a letter that they sent to the developer today. They have, they're provided about three different options to correct that problem. And so the developer's got to decide which of those three options he wants to do to correct that problem. There's, like I said, there's three ways it could be corrected as far as improving, replacing substandard water lines, and that's what I think is what it would be. We did recommend no plats be approved until that time, until that, that option is picked, and there's a timeline for those improvements to be completed. At this time, we don't know yet.
Just don't know?
Yeah, we don't know what that timeline is. I mean, the improvements could have to be designed still, and then they'll have to be, do we have to buy easements or not? We wouldn't be. Does the developer have to buy any easements, and, or is there existing easements they can reuse? I mean, all that has to be worked out, and then obviously, then they'll, once they know all that, I think they'll have a better idea how long it would actually take to put the improvements in.
Is sprinkling one of those three options?
Certainly sprinkler systems would be an option. It's about 700 gallons per minute is what they have. So if they put sprinkler systems in, that would give them, they can go to half, so they go to 500, assuming they keep the size of the homes below, can't remember the exact size, 3,600 square feet, yeah, total square footage, garage and everything. So that would certainly is an option for them as well. I think they're, I think they're leaning towards the waterline improvement, so I think that's what they wanted to do. A portion of this property does lie within the 100-year floodplain, so the developer would be required to do a hydrologic and hydraulic study to be submitted, and would probably would then lead to a letter of map revision application. Staff does recommend the developer, we did, the maps did just get revised. I don't think this area really changed much, if at all. But we did recommend a look at those new maps and the new flood study to make sure that everything's, they have the correct boundaries before they start, obviously, trying to plan how they might change those. Number nine comment we had, that is something that has been addressed. They had shown a proposed, or there's an existing sanitary sewer easement, and that easement would be, was shown within the building envelope of one of the lots, and so they've taken care of that, so we can remove that comment. Staff did recommend that the house elevations that face Lee Road or Rocky Fork Road have a brick or stone facade, not just a hardy board, and they did address that and took care of that. The rest of those comments were, came from CUD, and so there's, we kind of covered that already, the CUD comments there. The proposal would only be one access initially, which would be off of Lee Road. There would be a potential future access to that, either to Rocky Fork Road or to the Rocky Fork/McEwen New Broadway. And then there's also a stubs street proposed to the west, to some adjoining tracks of land. Again, there's, this property does border Olive Branch, and so there's quite a bit of floodplain on the southern part of it, and so that's, that's why most of the housing is concentrated towards the northern part of the property. The pattern book, which was in your packet, has all the, the other items about as far as type of housing is proposed. It's all single-family and what they would look like and everything. This is a developer we're familiar with, so it's typical of what he has developed in the past, so. I think that's what I have right now.
How much right-of-way would be required here?
What we used on Eden Springs was, I think, was 101 feet, is what Charles told me. So it would be something similar. We're looking at a very similar cross-section, a four-lane road with turn lanes that is needed. That's what the cross-section coming eastward from Franklin is that. So it would be something similar to that.
Looking at lots 62 and 63, I believe, are we, do we have enough distance between that rear setback and this? I mean, it appears tight, and I can't tell from just the draw.
Just scaling that off, I think it was, those two lots in particular were the closest ones. You do have some common open space shown between the lots and the future roadway, but it was, it scaled about, I think it was about 20 feet or so between the back of the lot to the proposed right-of-way location.
So you're.
Which is not very far, obviously. 20 feet's not.
No.
It's not very far.
To a four or five-lane highway. Is there some type of easement? I was looking at, what is that lot, 61? Do we have an easement running there between the, I was just trying to figure out, could those lots be moved?
Yeah, that's, there's an 18-inch sewer line through that. That's part of the Olive Branch sewer main, yeah.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking at there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Other questions for staff?
Kevin, on the McEwen exchange, where will it, will it come across the property? Will it come within close proximity to it?
It's actually crossing the property. It shows up, it's kind of that, kind of the dark gray line that crosses the property, kind of the eastern part of the property. They're showing about three acres total area of right-of-way that would be a part of this, coming out of this property. That's based on our, we very recently finalized that corridor study, and that's, that's the route that was picked.
So could that, it could change what we're looking at right now? That and the floodplain?
Well, the flood, the floodplain, yes, certainly they'll have to figure out, they'll have to go through the process with FEMA and everything to do that map revision, to make that part of it work. But, I mean, there, they are accommodating that right-of-way with this layout. I mean, I mean, it, it could be devolved how it's laid out with the right-of-way as shown already. So I mean, that part of it, it's not going to change, it wouldn't necessarily have to change this layout to accommodate the right-of-way at that location.
Okay. So the PRD is for the 41.66?
Correct.
And they're wanting the 6.17 at R1?
Correct.
Would that be, what part of the parcel here is the six acres?
Basically, that, that right-of-way and the area to the east of that proposed right-of-way.
Yeah, because that's, that, that whole area towards Olive Branch is low in there, especially where the existing houses are. Is R1 appropriate for that part of the zoning for this parcel?
I think, at this time, I think they don't know, that they're not planning any, any development on that side. I think that's really just kind of, they want it to be annexed, but they don't have a development plan at this time. It's really just a place holder, yeah. I think with a five-lane road, there's opportunities for things in long term. There's certainly will be opportunity for some other item, other potential development options other than single-family residential, probably, in some of that area.
Is there someone here representing this project? And if so, I'd like to have you come up, and I know I have a few questions or maybe some more. If you give us your name and address, please.
Rob, which is SEC, Mervisboro. Appreciate you all tonight. On that side, I'm here to answer any questions you have, and that in regards to what Kevin's had to say and what you guys may have to ask on this.
I'd like you, for me, to address 60, lots 62 and 63. I just, I've got some concerns just from a safety perspective from that, and I just want to see if you have any idea measurement-wise, if it's any distant, what we're looking at, or just your thoughts in general on it.
I think Kevin's close to that in regards to his scaling and off method. I didn't really look at it in regards to how much width is between those two. It's probably in that 20 to 30 foot range in regards to that. That's beyond the property line in the back of that, of those lots on that side. So you're technically looking at potentially 40 or 50 feet between the actual back of the house, if the house is all the way to the rear setback, to that right-of-way. And that's just the right-of-way. That's not saying that's the actual edge of pavement.
Right.
So I mean, if Kevin's looking at this from a four-lane standpoint, or even a five-lane standpoint, there'll still be some more technically green space, sidewalk space inside that right-of-way. So the actual pavement will probably be more like 60, 70, more, more feet away from the back of those homes. But we, you know, we can definitely look at that as being some kind of landscape area in that side, you know, putting up some, you know, some evergreen trees and stuff to buffer the back of those properties from that right-of-way and that green space. We didn't want this thing to be exactly right up against that with the opportunity of knowing we can do some kind of landscape buffer in there to kind of soften the feel and character between those two different uses on that, on that corridor there.
So you don't have any concerns then as far as the safety aspect, or as far as that goes?
Well, I mean, I think this really comes down to, until we start getting some engineering design on that roadway, I don't know what the, you know, the actual parameters are for that width of that roadway on that side. You know, I don't know if there's going to be guardrails in relationship to the bridge across the creek on that side. So there's a lot of things that, a lot of dynamic things that haven't been figured out, that haven't come through, as to whether or not, you know, there's guardrails, that would be a protective barrier for traffic moving along that roadway, that if something did leave the roadway, there would be something protective there. But just knowing that the relative proximity to that and having to cross the creek, that there may be some in regards to bridging that over there, there may be some guardrails coming off of that bridging there that would protect that area on that side. But I do see your point in regards to your concerns on that.
Okay. And were you good as far as what the staff was recommending as far as elevations that? And were you good as far as what the staff was recommending as far as elevations that are facing Lee and, was it Rocky Fork?
Yeah, I already spoke to my developer the other day when the comments came through, and he said he was totally okay with doing brick on all those, on those six houses, more or less. You've got four of those houses that you have backing up to the, you know, the future roadway there, we do the back of those, it'd be all brick. There's one house that's to the right, or the side elevation would be brick on that side, and you've got one house on the north lot, number one up there, that sides MLLE Road, that would be brick as well. We don't have a problem making that contingency.
Other questions for Rob while we have him up here?
I would, you know, I want to kind of jump on what Kevin was saying about the FID letter coming through at 4 o'clock today, that we've already talked to my client in regards to that. The first alternative is in that report and encompasses us driving, I'm sorry, bringing sewer, water line all the way about 2,900 linear feet up Rocky Fork, the existing right-of-way today, to get to the entrance we're showing there on the, on the Rocky Fork McEwen Drive side of there. So that would be our connection point for water, for us to upgrade those lines from a six or four-inch line to an eight-inch line. That would bring our pressures up well above the 1,000 GPMs that are required by the town on the side at this point in time. So that would be our water connection point besides the six-inch line that we have out there at the front of the entrance on Lee Road. So more or less, CUD's plan for this is to kind of connect these pipelines together to increase those pressures for this whole little corner of, you know, of the area on that side.
So that should get us to where we need to be PSI-wise?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Rob, is that entrance a double-wide entrance? I can't tell on the drawing.
The McEwen, the...
The Lee Road?
Lee Road, yeah. It would be, it would be an entrance that's going to have a dedicated left-hand turn lane, and then a typical right-hand.
Okay, that's where I was going with it.
Yeah, it's a three, it's a three-lane entrance, so that you have a dedicated left and dedicated right in one lane end. Same would go with the Rocky Fork entrance on that side, too. That way, there's no backups waiting for somebody to make a left-hand turn out of the subdivision.
Other questions?
Just wanted to understand, what you're saying is right now there's a 20-foot right-of-way, and we usually require 100, 201 foot?
No, that's for, for the proposed Rocky Fork connector, yeah, that would be 101. That's what we had used. The 20-foot right-of-way I've mentioned was the Jordan Lane, which is the small little street that connects from Lee Road down to Rocky Fork Road kind of through this property. That's where Mr. Brooks told me he has a 20-foot right-of-way for that little street that they're talking about abandoning as part of this development. It's, it's a, it's a nice paved driveway is what it is, really. It's really not a decent public road at all.
Okay, are we, we good with Rob?
One other question for me. I know Lee Road has a lot of development taking place on it now. Are we looking at turn lanes at all? As, traffic studies are being done, I know, but are we looking at any kind of turn lane?
I don't, we, we haven't begun our, you know, certainly a future planned road improvements that the town's looking at, certainly. We haven't done that, we're looking, you know, Rocky Fork Ammerville is our priority right now. I think certainly, long-term, yes, I think you would see turn lanes in Lee Road. I don't know that there, we did not, our ordinance wouldn't require a traffic study just for this development. It didn't meet the criteria.
Well, currently, Lee's still a two-lane road.
It's a two-lane road, no shoulders or anything.
So somebody's stopping waiting for oncoming traffic.
Right.
It'd be better if they stopped in a...
And certainly, there's been existing developments, there's quite a bit of traffic already there.
Well, I think we have to start looking at that, because if not, you're going to have traffic stopping for one car to turn. And if they can stack into a turn lane, traffic can continue to flow.
Right.
So not just this one, Rob, but I think going forward, where we have two-lane roads like that, we, we need to start looking at requiring turn lanes.
Yeah, with 88 homes...
It's not a lot of homes, I know.
Yeah, it's not, it's not...
But there are other projects on Lee Road, too.
There are, and some of them are, and we did, I think, I have to remember, I think with Gwen Farms, once it makes the connection, I think there were some improvements planned for that, at least a turn lane into there when they get to that south side.
That's a lot of homes.
That's, that's a much bigger development than this, certainly.
What's your recommendation on it here?
You know, without a traffic study, having somebody look at it, I hesitate to make a recommendation one way or the other, really. Certainly not make recommendations to require it. I don't know that I'm ready to do that.
Okay, so if we saw fit to move forward with this, we could make this obviously subject to traffic study result.
I mean, you could, you could certainly ask for a traffic study as a condition, you know, as, as part of the approval, that they do a traffic study before they bring the flat back.
What is the threshold again on the traffic study requirement?
A thousand trips, or 100 trips, 1,000 trips a day or 100 at the peak hour. Typically, 100 houses is where you really hit the...
And it's not just this, it's not this subdivision, it's just anywhere we have two-lane roads, we're getting pretty busy and...
Yeah, I think it's looking at it in totality where we're at it.
Or maybe we need to look at the threshold itself.
Yeah, that was, we use that because that's kind of a standard that a lot of communities around us use. That's kind of why we went with it when we first adopted that into our order.
Lee Road's an old county road.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's the reason I'm asking. It's not a city road, it's not built to city standards. Do we know the width of Lee Road, Rob? Have you looked at that?
I have not measured that for certain off the top of my head, but I will say it's probably in that 20 to 22-foot, you know, pavement width on that side.
There's no shoulder or anything like that.
So there, there's one.
Okay, anything else for Rob?
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you all.
Charles, I have just a couple of questions for you real quick. So we mentioned the possibility of doing some buffering on the Rocky Fork, Eden Springs side of this, so, and we were talking about what would possibly be there as far as, I would anticipate sidewalks for sure. In your opinion, are we okay here with, with, with what we're looking at from right-of-way perspective and...
All right, well, probably, like I said, this, having guided into the great details, but this may be something like we do on our section we've already built, where we plan for four lanes with the raised median for your turn lanes, and like we made us build, like we did on Eden Springs, just build the two with the median, and then we can grow out to the five.
Okay.
But the 101 foot right-of-way, that should accommodate what we need.
Okay. Your thoughts on just having a turn lane at the entrance off of Lee Road, requiring?
That would be good, like I said, we're looking at future like we are on Rocky Fork Ammerville going to three-lane. I would like to see to go ahead and get that right-of-way dedication, 40-foot off-center line of Lee Road. That way, if we do come back at a later time, when we get ready to make that a three-lane, possibly all the way down it, that we have the right-of-way, which we've been doing on Rocky Fork Ammerville. We've been getting that extra right-of-way, and like I said, we're in the design of that now, and having that right-of-way all, already in place definitely moves the project along a lot quicker, as not having to get that.
So the potential of having a center turn lane?
Yes, that way you'd have the, just three-lane it all the way.
Yeah, okay.
And that'll take care of all the driveways plus the major entrances. So having it, I mean, that is further down the line, because we don't have as many developments out there right now, you just don't know at what pace they're coming. Having a left-turn lane there now would be advantageous to go ahead and have that, but have the right of, the 40-foot off-center line right-of-way would be good on my part.
Okay. Anything else, Charles? All right. Lot of discussion here. Do we have any other questions or thoughts we need to get out on the table?
Kevin, with the realignment of Rocky Fork, that second entrance, the back entrance, I guess, to the east there, would there be any issue with getting it connected? Because that's not, I mean, if you're tying to a state road, that's another whole process, right?
Well, this is...
It would be city, county?
Whether or not, yeah, this would certainly, at this time, it would just be a local route. It could be a state route, who knows? That's an option we've talked about for funding purposes, as added to the state system. But right now, it is proposed really as a local street, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just know having that many houses on one way in and one way out's not good.
Yeah, you're getting close to that. I mean, you do have the stub street to the west, and that, that can, from a fire-coast standpoint, that does count. Helps you out in that count.
I will entertain a motion then.
I'm going to make the motion to approve subject to traffic study and all staff comments, and making sure those, I can't read the lot numbers because I don't have my glasses on, but those are the four lots that you mentioned.
62, 63.
Have some sort of buffer for protection against that roadway.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to final plats, the first one being Lake One Crutchfield, one-lot subdivision, 5308 Cooks Lane. Owner, developer, Susan L. Crutchfield, revocable trust.
Yeah, this is the final plat. It's just for one lot on Rock Springs Road, just west of Cooks Lane. It's about 1.73 acres. It's in the R1 zone. Typically, one-lot subdivisions, one- and two-lot subdivisions are not always brought to the planning commission. This one is required to do so because it is on utilizing a septic system and a public sewer. Also means it has to go to the council for approval. We did have a few comments left. One that noted that Rock Springs Road is a collector and adequate right-of-way does, is shown for that street. They need to add the owner's, the owner's signature as well as TDAC prior to recording. Number three is, I've already covered. Number four, they, they did provide a copy of their permit. They've actually already received their septic permit, so we can remove comment number four. Comment number five, this is an area that has been part of an area, kind of a service area swap between the town and CUD. And so basically, this does lie within CUD's boundary. The town can't provide that water unless CUD would allow for it to happen. They actually, our understanding is they don't have any water service to that area. So it probably, most likely, it may end up being, a town would be providing water, but CUD has to grant that release. And so they did modify the plat to add CUD's signature block. So that, that is there. So that essentially is, we got, that part of it still needs to be worked out before we can approve or actually record the plat. But once that gets worked out, either CUD's signature will be added or that block will be removed, and the town will be providing water. So that part can certainly get worked out afterwards. But with those four remaining conditions, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, how far away is the water, seating water from that property?
The town will have the water line directly across the street.
Okay.
So we can certainly provide water without any issues whatsoever, but it is within CUD's boundary, so.
Okay. So it's there, it's just a matter of getting approval.
Right, and it, because, and I don't believe CUD has a line there right now, so.
Does the city line go on out Rock Springs?
Yes, it goes all the way to, that's, that's how we provide, well, we provide water to most of, we sell water to them, and that's how, that's the main, takes that out there.
And there's not a sewer line out there?
There's no sewer anywhere, no.
Closest one is Gwen, I mean.
It's Gwen or Potts Crossing area, east of, really Gwen Farms would be the closest
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, staff comment.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
No second.
Lots of seconds. Either Amy or Miranda. Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Next, under final plats, we have Marlo Smyrna, Genie Lane, owner, developer, G.S. Smyrna.
Yeah, this is the final plat for the Marlo development. This is on Genie Lane, and also has a little bit of friends on Marlo College Boulevard. This is two lots in the R6 district, 46.157 acres. This would also be dedicated, the right-of-way for the Collector Road to connect Genie Lane through this project and over to the Vintage Project. First comment, Genie Lane and Carriage House Drive are collectors on Thoroughfare Plan, and adequate right-of-way does already exist for Genie Lane, and that right-of-way would be dedicated with this plat for Carriage House Drive. Number two, regarding the name, road name for Carriage House Drive, we have received that documentation, so we can remove comment two. Comment three is a standard comment regarding the owner signing the plat. There is an 80-inch water main, a lot one, which would need to connect to the 10-inch main in Carriage House Drive. It does connect at one location, but then it loops around and doesn't make the connection at the second location, and we need that, at that second location, that water line does need to be looped for fire flow purposes, so, and keep the lines, chlorine residuals up and all that kind of stuff. So that main needs to be connected at that location still. We'd ask them, there's, there's really one line shown for the potable water main and the reused water main. Those are two, they need to be two separate mains. If really, there's only one line shown, and it's both got, got both labels on it, so they still need to show that, so we need to keep comment five, and they just need to go ahead and submit their water sewer construction plan, so. Staff would recommend approval with all comments except for number two.
Questions for Kevin on this final plat? Time's up.
Bless you, Jim.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Miranda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our last item under final plants is Schwartz Crossing. Matthew Miller, owner, developer, Michael, says Homs.
It should be Homes, Michael's Home.
That's what I thought.
That's a little bit of a typo there. Yeah, this is Schwartz Crossing, this is actually phase two of it. This is 25 lots, it's the main phase. It's phase two, but it's the main phase. It's 25 lots in an R1 zone, 12.25 acres. We had a few comments, and some of them have, have been addressed. Just one, just as an informational comment, there's nothing, those streets on the major Thoroughfare Plan are affected with this, so we can, there's nothing to look at there for right-of-way dedication. Comment number two, to add the owner's signature again, is a standard comment. We'd ask them, there's about six of the lots, 12th and 13th, 15th and 16th, and 19th and 20th, where there's a large easement, a 20-foot or larger easement on the side lot line, and we typically have, require an extra five feet of a building setback on those side easements to ensure that there's no HVAC units or anything like that to get built into our easements. And so we'd ask for that extra five feet setback, and so we, we still need to, they still need to address that comment, so we need to keep that one. Comment number four, we still also need to keep that one to show some additional dimensions. There's a couple easements that cross at odd angles. There's a couple easements that cross at odd angles and we just need to be sure we know how far those easements are from the lot lines and those kind of things, so we can, they can be located in the field if need be. So, we need to keep comment four. Number five can be removed, they clarified that, it should have been thirteen, not sixteen, so they've taken care of that. Number six, we had a comment that there's just a few spaces in their common area where the milk yask and all that is. Those should be nineteen feet long, there's no dimension shown. They scaled to, but to me, they scaled to about eighteen, so we need to keep comment six. Uh, comment number seven can be removed, they did clarify that it does extend across those other lots. And then, comment number eight was really just a kind of a question we'd asked. Part of the detention pond actually is on, uh, the majority of the detention pond is in common open space, but there's about, I think, five lots that have a little piece of the detention pond on them, or at least the easement on them. So, typically, those are located within, completely within open space, so, um, there is an area delineated that they are, stormwater detention easement is delineated on those lots. And really, it's typically, there are completely enclosed in open space, but this one has been designed to have a little bit on those lots, so, uh, nothing, nothing really to address there, just that was, I didn't want to bring that up, so it's, because it's not typical of what we see, so. I think that's all that I've got.
Is this consistent with what we've previously seen on preliminary?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd approve, staff comment.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? A motion and a second to approve with staff comments, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We're now on to site plans, with the first one being Extended Stay America, south end of Sergeant Asbury-Hawn Way, owner, developer, Smyrna Commons Development. And Mitchell, you have this.
Yeah, so, these couple of these site plans of same thing we've seen the past couple of months, which has expired after the year period since they were last approved, so, a couple of these wanting to build prints, now this is one of them, located on Sergeant Asbury-Hawn Way. Building size about forty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet. The original plans you saw last year was, I believe, a hundred and twenty rooms, they've reduced it down five rooms, so it's on a hundred and fifteen rooms now. The property is vacant and since the last time y'all have seen this, they did subdivide the property, which is now gonna be the appropriate space to accommodate for this development. One access point is proposed off of Sergeant Asbury-Hawn Way and then surrounding zoning consists of C-two, I-two, and the PRD, which is the Copperfield Apartments. For reference purposes, this was previously approved back in April of last year. Vehicle use area for the site is one point four-three acres, which does require six thousand two hundred and twenty-eight square feet of landscaping. Uh, they're proposing for over double that at about fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two square feet. Parking required is a hundred and fifteen spaces and they're showing for a hundred and twenty-five, and that does require five handicap parking spaces and they're showing for five as well. The landscape plan shows a type C landscape buffer along the western property line bordering the apartment complex. Uh, shrubbery is proposed around the base of the building. Additional shrubs and trees are also shown within landscape islands around the parking lot. Architectural elevations show the building materials consisting primarily of brick and stone with ephes as the secondary material. The total building consists of forty-five percent brick, twenty-six percent stone, and twenty-nine percent ephes, and as designed, it does meet our designer review requirements. Uh, standard comments one through five will remain as part of this and a couple of staff comments. Uh, comment one was regarding the FDC location, uh, and then comment two is regarding utilities comment, just wanting clarification, so, uh, both those will remain, wait for utilities and fire to make sure those have been addressed accordingly, but nothing major on those, so, uh, with that, staff would recommend approval with the, those comments.
Questions for Mitchell?
Really no changes from before, except five rooms smaller.
Correct. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Amy. Do I have a second?
No second.
Second for Miranda. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Our next site plan is Gwynn Farms Amenities Center, Dale Drive, owner, developer, Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC.
This is another one of those plans that has expired since approval. The Gwynn Farms, this is a amenity center, first of their amenity centers for the entire development. Uh, this was also reduced down in size since you last saw it. The previously approved plans back in January of last year showed for roughly twenty-seven hundred square foot size amenity building. They've reduced that down to closer to fifteen hundred square feet. Everything else on the site has stayed the same, all the same parking spaces, there's still a pool out there, um, the building was just shrunk down in size. This entrance is located off of Dale Drive, uh, which is the secondary entrance to the development and, uh, let's see, vehicle use area for the site stayed the same, about twelve thousand five hundred square feet, which does require, uh, all over twelve hundred square foot of landscaping. They're showing for almost fourteen hundred square feet. Parking showing of twenty-five spaces and they are showing the correct number of handicap spaces at two. The landscape plan shows variety of shrubs planted around the pool as well as the pavilion and pool house. Additional shrubs are shown lining the parking lot with trees planted in landscaped islands. And the architectural elevations have stayed the same as well, just for a smaller footprint of building. The, it's gonna be primarily fiber cement board with a base layer of brick around the entire building. And we had no staff comments on this, just the typical standard comments to remain, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
The actual envelope that this is on remains the same, does it not?
Everything is the same, the building is just shrunk a little bit.
Okay.
Did you say the original building was, Mitchell?
Uh, closer to twenty-seven hundred square feet. So, dropped down about twelve hundred.
Other questions?
Kevin, is there, or Mitchell, is there any size for the size subdivision that the amenities, the center has to be?
Square footage.
Square footage, yeah, because they drop twelve hundred square feet off of it?
Not to my knowledge. Um, I know they have several of them planned for the entire subdivision. Um, this is just the first one, but I don't believe we have a stipulation as far as.
Is there two more for this?
I know for sure one. I saw for, yes.
Future phases.
For the back porcelain road, okay.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Miranda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. A motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Next, under site plans, Keenfield, Sharp Springs Road, owner, developer, Landmark Homes LLC.
This is a, another one of those site plans, it was last approved in February of last year, uh, so we passed the year approval for site plans on this project as well. More or less resubmitted about the same since we last saw it, still twenty-seven homes, uh, single-family homes, uh, off of Sharp Springs Road. The property was approved for this PRD zoning back in November of twenty-one. The proposed amenities for this development would include a gazebo with sitting areas and separate spaces with benches and a walking path providing a connection to Sharp Springs Park, which is located directly to the west of the site. Vehicle use area for the site, one point one-seven acres, which does require, uh, five thousand one hundred and sixteen square foot of landscaping. They're proposing for, uh, five thousand seven hundred and nineteen square feet. Park required of fifty-four spaces and they're showing, uh, combination, we're looking at about fifty-four garage spaces, so all single-car garages, uh, one hundred and eight driveway spaces and eighteen guest spaces throughout the development. Uh, not required for handicap parking spaces, but they're showing one at the back amenity area. Landscape plan shows variety of trees to be planted throughout the site, along the roads and in public spaces. Uh, shrubs are also proposed to be planted along Sharp Springs Road. Per the approved PRD, each home will have foundation landscaping as well. Architectural elevations for the homes will consist of all masonry products, including brick, stone, and fiber cement board. Homes will have varying styles and architectural designs, but will retain masonry products which are consistent with the approved PRD. Uh, standard comments one through five will all remain. We are, we're gonna require a dedication of minimum twenty-five foot from the center line of Sharp Springs Road per the approved PRD as part of this plan as well. Uh, standard comment one was regarding the plat for the dedication of right of way along Sharp Springs Road as well as any other easements, prioritizations of any building permits. And then, comment two is regarding the a hundred-year floodplain in this area. The new maps are scheduled to come out next week on the ninth. Uh, lots six and seven will be affected by this, so, uh, any kind of modifications to the floodplain in that area will require a review from FEMA in that appropriate process. Uh, the applicant is aware of this, have discussed it with him as well, so, um, this is more of a standard comment, but just bring it to light, uh, that's what that one is about, so. With that, staff would recommend approval with the remaining comments.
Questions from Mitch or staff on this?
I tried to recall, this is a nature restricted, is it? I didn't think it was, okay.
This is the one where they were talking about more vertical ownership, isn't that, isn't that correct?
Development as far as that, it's an HPR, uh, so you're on the house and all of the land and the roads and all that will be private, owned by the HOA, maintained by the HOA.
And the HOA maintains the entire premises.
Right.
Other questions or comments?
Is this gated?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. I'll second. Staff comment.
Okay, motion for Mike, second for Mark. I have a motion to approve with staff comments and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Our last item under site plans is Rock Springs Business Park, Imperial Boulevard, owner, developer, BGS America LLC.
So, this is a site plan, about fifteen acre tract, uh, located along Imperial Boulevard, was rezoned from R-four to C-two fairly recently at the November council meeting. The first phase of this development consists of, uh, four office warehouse buildings. Two buildings are four thousand square foot each and then two are five thousand square foot each. Fourteen additional buildings are proposed for future development as shown on the master plan. Access points to this development are provided via Imperial Boulevard as well as the rear of the property is bordered by CSX right of way. So, it's basically a long linear tract land we got here. Vehicle use area for the site, one point three acres, uh, which would require five thousand six hundred and seventy-one square foot of landscaping. They're showing for five thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Total park required is sixteen space and they're showing for sixty-six, and that would require three handicap parking spaces, they're showing for four. Landscape plan shows street trees and a variety of shrubs lining the frontage of Imperial Boulevard. Uh, trees are also shown to be planted in landscape islands around the parking lot. The architectural elevations have been redesigned since packets went out last week, so, uh, the architectural elevations show four different building designs. I believe last week there were two different design styles submitted, so this week we got four different designs. All of them are relatively similar to each other, uh, you just have different styles of masonry products and hardy board. There was metal on the elevations that were submitted previously, they have been revised with hardy board now. So, uh, hardy board is now a secondary material, not a accent material considered per the designer review manual, which would be metal, so, uh, hardy now brings it closer into compliance than it was before, at least. The rear of the buildings is shown to be entirely hardy board. Staff does believe it is potentially visible from Lowry Street, so per designer review, you can only have seventy-five percent of the building has to be at least a primary material if you're visible from the public street, however, being it's set off Lowry Street a good bit, you also have the railroad in between existing buildings and existing vegetation in the way. We're fine on a staff level as far as the way they've shown it with the rear elevations being entirely hardy board. The, both sides and the front of the building are shown to be roughly a split of fifty-fifty for primary materials and then the secondary material of the hardy board. The, there is one of the side elevations, fourteen foot tall metal roll-up door, which would be painted a material similar to whatever design style the applicant decides to choose to go with for the masonry products. And then, the front of the building, you got also a split kind of fifty-fifty of the primary materials and the secondary material. You also have a metal roll-up door in the front, so, elevations here, you can kind of see what the doors I'm talking about look like, so you have the fourteen foot roll-up doors with painted similar color to the, uh, other materials they have on the building. So, as presented though, they don't meet designer review. The seventy-five percent of the materials should meet designer, should meet designer review requirements if they're visible from the public street. Both the sides and the front of the building would be visible from Imperial, thus the reason that designer review requirement kicks in. So, with fifty-fifty split roughly, they're not really close to that seventy-five percent requirement, so that's where we stand. The sides, we believe the sides and the front should be brought to designer review requirements with seventy-five percent primary materials. The back we're fine with as designed, so, up here currently, there's two different design styles, they've selected just different masonry products, like I mentioned on the lower half, upper half is the hardy plank design style they've decided to go with. So, quick overview on the architectural that they've decided to submit this time, so, standard comments, uh, one through six would all remain as part of this. Staff comment one and two are all utility comments, so those will remain. Comment three, there is a hundred-year floodplain, uh, that is further down on the southern end of this overall development, not just on this tract of development, but further down on the overall property, so we asked them to show that and that has been addressed. Comment five was regarding a twenty-foot sewer easement coming onto the property, we wanted to show an easement and easement was not shown previously, it's now shown, so comment five can be removed. Then comment four is regarding the architectural elevations, we would like them to revise architectural elevations, like, once again, staff is fine with the rear of the building being entirely hardy, um, that's obviously a decision up to y'all if you'd like it to be in compliance with designer review. Just a staff level, we're fine with the way they've designed that, and then we'd like the, both sides in the front of the building to be brought up to designer review standards. Upper discussion also is the metal roll-up doors. We've had some discussion here in the past couple of months regarding metal roll-up doors invisible from the roadway, so, um, that's also in discussion for however you want to do that as see fitting. And with that, staff would recommend approval with the remaining comments we have and whatever y'all decide to go with.
Okay. You know, I think, I can think of maybe two examples where, uh, we've had front and side elevations to meet design review and, and because of something to do with the rear and maybe the way it was facing, I mean, I can think of the movie theater as a, my best example, it's, it's, the back of it is a sheer rock, uh, wall, I guess, for lack of better words.
Railroad track.
Yeah, and now we've got railroad tracks here that are elevated, are they not, in this area? Yeah. Uh, and being that, you know, we've, we've got vegetation, then railroad, then commercial buildings, and then Lowry Street, um, I'm comfortable with the rear, uh, being in hardy, it's just in my opinion. Uh, I do believe that front and sides should meet design review, and I think we've. And I think we've been consistent about that with other projects across the town.
I think I'd like to talk about the roll up doors a little bit too. We had that discussion with Enterprise a month or two ago. And just the metal painted roll up door looks pretty industrial to me. This is not an industrial zone, it's a commercial zone. So if I were to support it, I would certainly want to make sure we followed suit with what we did at Enterprise.
I think I'm a little surprised that we're putting warehouses as we go right into our beautiful depot district. I mean, you're going to be able to, and you know, we've looked and we've tried to make those townhomes not even have parallel parking so that it looks nice going down Rock Springs Road. I was surprised to see this.
I, I, I think there'd be just a little bit of delineation between industrial versus a commercial building. Because this is-
This is more of an office, what we call office warehouse.
And I guess that goes back to the metal and the roll up doors and the look of it?
Yeah, the metal we're not doing and the roll up, I'm not for, not the metal roll up door.
Roll up doors, obviously that's a little different, but I'm thinking about existing similar type development on Seven Oaks Boulevard. Now those doors are all in the back, but-
These are visible.
But they're, they're same type of uses though. And in there, we've got, there's multiple different kind of companies in there that have done well over there. I mean, they're, this is something that you see, they're, they're thinking, talk with them, they're like a plumbing contractor, people like that. They need an office area to work out of for their employees to come to. Then they have the area in the back where they have their trucks parked and their equipment store and material store and that sort of thing.
And there's no parking really in the rear of this thing.
Right, yeah, they're all-
Any parking's going to have to be in the front.
Yeah, yeah, and then they'll have the area in between, kind of, each one is kind of paired together where you have some area in between where there'll be some areas for, like I said, if you have some, some business trucks and things like that.
Is there any concern about those, so much traffic coming out right at that stop between Imperial and going on to Rock Springs Road? I mean, it's a small area.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't meet, it's kind of our criteria to require a traffic study. We haven't seen a traffic study or anything like that for the development.
I'm kind of like Amy, but I think the further down we go with this project and what they've got proposed here, they're going to go just about from the creek all the way down towards, back towards Laverne. The further down you go, the more visibility you have up there. Because people walk from the apartments over there anyway, then you've got an area down about the market where you'll be able to see the whole back of those buildings. They're going to be very, very visible from Lowry Street. And CSX keep those railroad tracks maintained for, for the trains. So I doubt there's going to be a whole lot of vegetation unless they plant something to try to block that view. But you're going to see them. If you look across there now, you can see them.
But getting back to the, we do, I don't know that we've looked at the traffic there, where we come out to in Imperial. Answer your question directly, I don't know that we've had any discussion about that. When we had our staff review, we really didn't talk about it from a traffic standpoint. Because it's typically, what we've seen, like I say, along Seven Oaks Boulevard, there's not been, there's traffic in and out, but it's not an overwhelming amount of traffic typically, what we've seen.
Well, that being so, C two, depending on what's in there.
It depends on the uses certainly.
It's got to be limited to a C two use, correct?
Yeah, it'd be a C two use.
Talking about more than fourteen buildings, I mean, four warehouses and fourteen other buildings, that's going to, there's going to be some trucks.
Is it engineer here? Would you like, yes, do we have someone representing, if you come up and give us your name and address, please?
Chris McGuire, Hudson Steel Engineering, twenty-one fifteen Northwest Broad Street. I've been talking with the client as we've been going and as far as the sides and the front architectures, we're willing to take that brick up higher like y'all had, like y'all were requiring to get that seventy-five percent on the sides and front. Now on the back, we're currently showing a metal paneling. It wasn't hardy shown on the back. Just looking at the elevations, that railroad track behind us is fourteen foot tall. So if there's going to be any visibility, you'll be seeing the eaves and peaks in the back. I don't, I don't believe you'll be seeing the back end of the buildings in their entirety. But we are willing to take the, that brick material up and make sure we get that seventy-five percent brick on the front and on the sides. And I guess we'd request that we get to keep the back, the metal paneling. It's just, like I said, it's, we've got a hundred feet, then the railroad and then the back of those businesses that are all along Lowry. So I mean, we're, we're a few hundred feet away from Lowry and then we've got a fourteen foot tall train track in between us.
How tall are these roads going to be, Chris?
About eighteen.
So will we be visible?
Yeah, that's, yeah, the eaves you'll be able to see.
How much space between the back of that building and the right of way for CSX?
It's a hundred foot right of way.
So there's plenty of room to get a vehicle in the back?
Well, yes, the only issue with the, with doing anything back there is if they want to take it back, they can have it. So we've basically stopped our development before those train tracks just so. CSX ever wants to come in, it's not going to hurt these buildings, these businesses, they'll be able to keep functioning.
And that brings us to another question, if there's enough room back there for deliveries, if they're going to be used for a plumbing, electrical contractor, things like that, is there, can the door on the front disappear?
I think the client is really wanting that front door. I think it's pretty key to the tar, the people that they're targeting. But we will have plenty of room in between the buildings for, if it is a plumbing contractor with a few trucks, there's, there's ample room to park on the sides. And then as Mitch had said, we're, we've almost got fifty extra parking spaces just so we have flexibility if somebody comes in and with a, with more employees than we intend, we have the ability to queue them as we need.
For vehicle space?
Yeah.
Mark, were you wanting to see if a door stays a clear?
That was my question when you finished speaking about the acrylic glass doors versus the metal roll up doors.
Would we be willing to do acrylic instead of the metal?
My, my concern there would be somebody coming in seeing what's in there. How are you going to guard that? And that's the reason I was asking about, could the doors disappear if they're loading and loading from the back? Because I, I know the convenience of loading in the front instead of driving around the back of the building and having a pass through. I understand that. But visibly looking at it and putting a, putting a clear, I don't think would work either.
Personally, I would rather see the metal than clear because that clear will end up yellowing eventually.
I'm not talking about clear, I'm talking about tinted glass.
Oh, okay. And as far as traffic's concerned, I don't, I mean, there are, we're looking at about eighteen buildings, but we're not talking about something that's, not talking about a retail center that's going to have people come in every hour. I mean, we might be talking about a few extra cars per building. It estimated a few extra cars per building. I mean, in reality, we only needed six spaces. So it looks like we have the ability, have, will have more trips than we really designed for, but-
Chris, how many of those buildings have front, front garage entrances?
All of them.
Every one of them?
Yeah, and then we've had a parallel street all the way down and we'll have an access in between each. As we've done it, there'll be an access, two buildings, then there'll be a space and then there'll be two buildings with one access. And they'll have one parallel street going all the way along Imperial. So they have a bunch of good cross connectivity. And currently the road stops short of the end of property. So as we get deeper into property, we'll have to actually build the road along Imperial because it currently stops at the second entrance for the apartments, I believe, across the street. So we'll have to build that infrastructure. And we're working with Smyrna currently to design the water line. Smyrna's putting in a twelve inch water line and we're going to participate in the installation of that to help Smyrna so they don't have to tear up driveways and redo water later.
For clarification, what, what are we talking, what are you proposing for the back and is that different?
It's metal. It is metal.
Okay, just want to make sure.
It, it does.
Okay.
Visually on the page, it looks the same, it's called out as metal.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, we've got several things to work through here. So what are our thoughts?
I don't see that it affects the area.
Okay. Now let's look at that. What's the zoning here, Kevin?
It's C two.
So-
The council changed that in November.
Okay. So for, for even then, this is a C two zone that has been approved and what's being proposed here is a C two product.
But it doesn't meet designer view, does it?
Currently it doesn't.
As proposed, no, it does not.
They did say they- Some exceptions.
They did, and they did indicate they would be willing to change the front and rear, the front sides of the building to be designer viewed. So really on the designer view side, what's left is-
Door in the back.
The door and then the back of the buildings, yeah.
Mitchell or Kevin, as far as rear, rear elevations and, and Lowry Street, are we looking at, at a potential four foot that would be visible or?
I mean, do you have some, in some places you could have actual building between Lowry Street and the railroad track in addition to the railroad track. Some places you don't, some places it's, it's parking area. In the future section you'll have where Nolan Drive was proposed to go across is, is open, you know. Certainly it is elevated higher than Lowry Street.
Okay.
Chris said fourteen feet, he may be exactly right, I really don't know the exact elevation above. Say from, if you're on Lowry Street, how far above Lowry Street, you know, the tracks are, I don't know exactly what that is.
I did, I did one of those little Google Street View things earlier today on Lowry Street. I think you'd be able to see it, how much is the question?
Yeah, I mean, you got, it's just going to be the, some portion of the top of the part of the building, but yeah. It may be four feet, this is what Chris was saying, but I don't know that we can say definitively how much.
But as they add buildings, you're going to see it all the way down through there from the market there at McDonald's. Is it going to go down that far?
Yes.
You'll see it from there all the way to the creek. Because that's where the buildings were supposed to go. Did you say they were thinking about opening up that road, Kevin, to go across?
No, there at one point, Nolan, there at one point Nolan Drive had been planned to, to connect to Imperial. That is not going to happen. CSX will not grant crossing and, and so that's not going to happen, no.
I hope they'll be used to walk across now, you said people walking through there.
Yeah.
Other discussion?
What did we decide on the doors?
I don't think we did.
We, we haven't decided?
Yeah. I mean, it's been discussed, but I don't think, we don't have any motion or any, anything, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to deny because it does, does not meet design review.
Okay, I have a motion to deny from Mike because of not meeting design review. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for me. All in favor of denying this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, so that, that is denied. We're now on to the May bond review report.
Yes, bear with me, we have a long one this month. Probably one of the longest ones we've ever had, I think. I think we got nineteen today. And some of them thankfully it looks like we've, we'll be able to release. The first one is just out of Veranda's. This was one of the newer hotels, had a, had to extend a water line. There's just one item left regarding a pad for backflow needs to be raised. Once that gets done, we can release this, release this escrow account. Amherton section three, this is the end of their maintenance period. All the thing we have left is for the RAS bills to be submitted. So once we can release, receive those, we can release this escrow account. The Legacy Resub Lot Twenty, this is the proposed townhomes that are about to get started as far as going vertical over there. There's still some items to be done over there, but they have done quite a bit of the work that that barn covers as far as the water sewer installation. So we can reduce that to fifty thousand dollars and extend that one year. Burton Farm section six, to talk to that developer, they are anticipating paving in that development this year. They're about eighty-six percent built. We would recommend a six month extension on that one, to get that paving done this year. Woodpoint section one and section two, both same developer, same development. My contact there evidently no longer works there and I have had, have not been able to, to get another contact. So I have not heard back from them or anyone on that project. We would recommend a six month extension there just so we can hopefully get that, get a new contact there and get that ball rolling. Because they are built out in that development, so they need to get that worked out. Stone Trace, this is the commercial area along, at Old Nashville Highway and San Berly Parkway. Five out of the eleven lots are having built on there. To talk to that developer, they most likely are going to wait till next year on that. They're with the, some more of the lots still to be built, plus the apartments that are behind there that are about to go vertical as well. So they kind of want to wait another year before they put that final topping down. Patterson Property, this is where the town is extending Spring Hill Drive, which is under construction. The, talked to that developer, they have sold it to a different development company as of January thirty-first. And so we would need to keep that bond. We will need to, we need to get it switched out with a new developer needs to provide us and I have talked with them about that. They'll need to provide us the bond and then we, at that point, we would release the previous development bond. We, we do need to keep that one while we're, because they really can't get any work done until we finish artwork, so. Amherton section one, everything's complete and it's the end of their maintenance period so we can- so we can release that one. Cedar Hills, Section 1, Phase 1 and 2. They did talk to the developer there, they are working to get those punch list items completed. They don't know if they'll get, be able to get done by the end of May. This is their end, end of their maintenance period. If they get all items completed, we can release, otherwise we, we just need to extend three months till they can get everything finalized there. Buckingham Place, Section 1, this is the end of the maintenance period on there. There's just a few items to clean up on that one. The developer believes he's got everything completed. If he has, we can release it when, when everything is done, otherwise we would need to keep it till they get done, but. Blakeney, Section 2, Phase 1. They believe they should be able to finish everything by late May, but it could bleed into June. We can reduce this one to 10,000, begin that one-year maintenance period if everything gets done by June 3rd. Otherwise, we need to keep the same amount. Woodmont 6B, there's really just some ASBills and sidewalks that need to be finalized there. So if they get that to us, we can probably release that one, we did recommend a six-month extension. Cedar Hills, Section 3, Phase 2. This one is just getting started, we had it about a year, so we would recommend an extension of that one at the same amount. Creekstone Village, finally did hear back from the developer there. He, we did, I did put him in touch with all the inspectors to, to get on site, and he wants to meet everyone on site and kind of get a game plan together. So I would recommend a three-month extension on that one, so hopefully he can get in here and get that work done. Cedar Park is the commercial, small little commercials, still a connection there between Rock Springs and Cedar Grove Road. Two of those lots, one's built, one's under construction, and one's been approved for construction, so really there's just a third lot about to get started. I did talk to that developer, since the packets went out, he's, he's asking for more time, because they're going to get at least one more lot sold, so we, we did recommend a six-month extension on that one. Blakeney, Section 1, Phase 2, same kind of comment as the other part of Blakeney. We can, can't go to the maintenance period if they get everything done by June 7th, otherwise we need to keep the same amount. Westover, Phase 1A, they have paved there, so we can reduce that to 10,000 and start the maintenance bond year. And then Buckingham Place, Section 3. They, again, the developer says we think he's got everything done except the paving and striping. I will make note that we did receive a, our, sorry, Public Works received a phone call from someone who lives in that area. It's been there since 2019 and wondering when the roads are going to get paved, and so. Again, if he gets it paved by June 10th, we can certainly reduce that to 10,000 and start the maintenance period. My original recommendation was six months extension at the current amount. If he doesn't get it paved, I'm going, since that call has come out, I think I want to reduce that to three, because I think we're, we're at the point they need to get that work done, so I want to change on that one to a three-month extension, if they, if they don't get the paving completed there, so. And that is it.
Questions for Kevin concerning the bond review report?
Lifter, approve the bond review.
I have a motion to approve the bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of approving the bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond review report is approved. We are now on to other? Kevin, I know you've got something-
I do have one or other tonight. I emailed this to everyone yesterday afternoon late, there's a hard copy on your, on your desk tonight as well, it is, again, slightly different, again. We just adopted this, our council adopted it at the April meeting on second reading. And I'll admit, I was a little, I'm a little frustrated with how this has gone. I sent this in for review with FEMA back in January to try and get the, make sure everything was good, everything was in place, that it, it was crickets, nothing happened until Tuesday afternoon, late in the afternoon. After we adopted it, they said, hey, we, we got a few changes we need to make. So they are highlighted in yellow in the document, they're very minor changes. One definition that they said needed to be there that wasn't in the model ordinance they sent me that I did add. A couple of the maps, which I added to the ordinance beyond what was on, in the model ordinance, because we had grown into those areas and they needed to be covered in, in our ordinance. There was one little letter in the map number I left off. And then we had the, of course, the town, FEMA minimum on a house elevation is one foot above, the town has always had three feet above. I changed it in one part of the ordinance and didn't change it in the other parts, we need to make that consistent. What is on your desk tonight that was not, and what I emailed you yesterday, is on the very last page, they want, what we typically put in our ordinance that, that the mayor actually signs and everything, they actually want it in the text of the zoning ordinance, not just in that ordinance. So I added that part about the effective date and for the mayor to sign, and the town clerk to sign, and all those things, so that is one thing, so. Again, very minor kind of cleanup things, hopefully this is the last time, we'll have to look at this for a while, until they add new maps again, which this time was 15 years, so it may be 15 years before we look at this again, but anyway, so that's for you, we need to hopefully make this as a recommendation to council so they can go ahead and get this through the process and get it approved after June council meeting and second reading, so.
Okay. So we've heard the changes from Kevin, do you have any questions?
Not a question, but three feet will now be the elevation above the base plane?
That, that's the way it's always been. And their model ordinance only had, because FEMA only requires one foot for residential.
Okay, I saw that one foot was scratched out.
Right, and so, and I, again, I changed it in one place and missed the other one, so. So, yeah, we're being, we're, it's, nothing's changing with how we're regulating it from that standpoint. Primarily, this was to adopt the new flood maps, was the primary reason for this adoption.
Okay, anything else? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this recommendation to council signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion's approved. Anything else under other?
I don't have anything else.
Counselor? Catherine? Chief? You good tonight? Charles, what did it with you, anything from you? Anything from the commission? Welcome, Charles, yeah, welcome, Charles.
Thank you.
Nothing else, we stand adjourned.